Good afternoon and welcome to the July 25th Council Work Session and our final work session until we take a six-week break. The first agenda item is Items of Interest. I have two different pieces that I want to introduce under that. Does anyone, any other councillor have something? Councillor Semple, why don't you? Emily and Claire, why don't you each go ahead first?
At the National League of Cities Conference in Little Rock that Greg and Betty and I went to, I was introduced to a really cool wayfinding visitor interaction thing. It looks like a great big cellphone. On the skinny sides, it has the street name, it's got lights on top, it's got video cameras on all four sides, it's got touchscreen with lots of icons on one side, and you scroll through and that brings you to different pages, you know, history with shop, where to eat, what to do with kids, how to get around transit, maps. It'll speak to you if you can't see, well, speak to you if you can see. It has one screen that's got all different languages, so you can make a change languages for yourself. It's just got an amazing amount of information. It's really fun to use, it's really attractive to people. You can call 911, it's got Wi-Fi. The thing that's really cool about it is it takes selfies. So you come up there and it shows you, and it takes four shots, and it sends it to your cellphone right away. So people love them, they're really interactive, a ton of information, fun to use, they're free. The company makes them, installs them, and maintains them. They make money from advertising, but it's all local advertising, not just peanut butter. So the restaurant page, you know, you probably pay extra to be on the first page, but it's all an incredible amount of information. Little Rock has, somebody told me 30, but I didn't get confirmation of that. It's all over, not all over, it's new, but it's spreading across the states, they're willing to go anywhere. And the Little Rock mayor said that they actually get part of the revenue, thought about $100,000 a year. So I really encourage us to look into this, it's smartcitymedia.com if anybody wants to look it up. And it's free, it's got wayfinding, it's got video cameras, we could save money. Thanks.
Great. Claire?
Thank you. Well, I don't know how interesting this is to folks, but I thought it was worth noting that I've been given a new committee assignment by the mayor. So councillor Zelenka got a new position that has made it difficult for him to participate in one of his assignments, so we switched. So I will be moving off of the Police Commission, which I've served on, I think, since I started on council, so I'm sorry to leave that commission, it's a very valuable commission that I've appreciated being a part of, but I will now be a member of the Metropolitan Planning Commission. And serving on that, which dovetails well with my role on the Lane Area Commission on Transportation. So just wanted to inform folks of that change.
Thank you, and I'm grateful to you for being able to switch and to Alan. And Alan, are you on the phone now?
I am, I'm the new Police Commissioner is on the line.
That's great, thank you and welcome. Any other council items? So I have two, and I've put a couple of things down in front of you, and the first one is that I wanted to give you just a quick update, and I shared a document from staff about the housing tools and strategies, which we originally called barriers to housing. Just because you gave them a six-month deadline, we haven't really had a time in a work session to get some kind of an update, and I didn't want to break before letting you know how that work was progressing. So they've given you a good, complete layout of what they're doing. I will just, you know, frame this to say that, remember that this actually came out of our, the recommendation from the Housing Policy Board that we institute a construction excise tax, and that as council you were not prepared to make that step without having a better understanding of how it would interact with other fees and regulations and costs that builders are facing in the community. So this was one way of looking back at what are those other barriers, what are those other challenges, how might they interact? And you gave staff six months to come back to you with a sort of, sort of a short list of the low-hanging fruit, of the strategies that we might be able to roll out relatively easily, and so staff is commissioned with sort of figuring out how to get there. And part of that is they have identified some expert help that they will get, a housing, an economist, a facilitator to help them work through the public engagement process, and then a code auditor, and you've heard a little bit about that already. But they are looking at a robust public engagement process, they're casting a wide net to make sure they're bringing in communities we often hear from and communities we don't often hear from, tenants as well as landlords and builders, as well as advocates for housing, so trying to get, and the plan, as I understand it, is four facilitated meetings. So they have a big list of people, they'll do the outreach to those folks, have those facilitated meetings, and the goal is to be able to come back to you by early December, before we break over the holidays, by early December to give you sort of what that, what they think that package looks like, what are the, what is the low-hanging fruit and what does that look like? And it is my hope, and I'll just put this out there, it is my hope that once we get to that point, we will be able to circle back in early 2019 and look at the construction excise tax again, that we'll begin to have a little more information. So just wanted to give you that, lay of the land, you know, more information if you need it, but I think this staff has done a, you know, they're well on their way and they've done a lot of prep. The second piece is a statewide measure, Measure 102. We were approached by the Housing Alliance, they are looking to have city councils across the state endorse this Measure 102, which basically would amend the state constitution that would allow private entities that are building affordable housing to partner and benefit from the credit sources of public agencies. So would enable us, these have been two silos, what the city is able to support, what private funders are able to support, this enables us to strengthen, does not increase any particular tax burden on the city, it just enables us to work with our housing providers in a way that gives them better opportunities for funding. So I have presented you with their resolution, that they are hoping that we would vote in support of today, so that it could be in the part of the voter's pamphlet in the November ballot. I have provided the original memo, which is a summary from about what this is all about, and then I have provided some information from the Housing Alliance about what this is about. Yes, Chris?
Thank you, Mayor. I would actually make a motion to support a resolution of statewide constitutional amendment for affordable housing bonds known as Measure 102.
Second.
Second.
Discussion questions, Mike?
It seems from the presentation that I've heard so far at this table on this in three other instances, that this seems like a worthwhile measure, but I, those were passing references, I did not know that we were going to be voting on whether or not we endorse or don't endorse this particular bill, and I haven't had any chance to speak to anybody at all about any unintended or negative consequences from the passage of this, so I'm not really comfortable with it just being dropped on us and asking us to vote when there hasn't been any real discussion about the effects of it. Thank you.
Chris?
Yes, I'll speak to it. It's entirely appropriate for the state constitution to prevent governments from using their bonding authority to support private business, and I think that is a reasonable thing that was built in long ago. But when it comes to this one specific exception, which is to allow governments to utilize their bonding authority to support private developers to build affordable housing, and that would be the only exception that this would allow in the constitution. It really gets at something that even the home builders have talked about wanting to support, which is if you're looking for ways to finance affordable housing, there are not a lot of mechanisms available. I mean, the CET is one we've been talking about, but they have actually been advocating for alternative methods, and this would allow one of those alternative methods. This would allow, by the state constitution, that a city like Eugene could pass a bond measure to build affordable housing, and then the proceeds from that bond measure could go to underwrite private developers, so that they could help to build affordable housing. Right now, if we passed a bond measure, it could only go to nonprofit providers, St. Vinnie's or Cornerstone or somebody like that. Well, we, I've at least felt, and I know the Housing Policy Board feels, that it's important to bring in additional partners, particularly private partners, because we're not going to really have a significant impact on the affordable housing issue unless we bring in partners, especially private partners. This would allow for private development companies to take advantage of a city's bonding authority and proceeds to be able to help underwrite affordable housing. It is the only exception in the state constitution to the prohibition against using government money to underwrite private business. And so from that standpoint, I think it has sufficient safeguards in it, it's getting at something that we want, and it also brings in the private development side, who I think is going to be a critical role in helping us to build this affordable housing. So it's fairly specific in what it does, it's fairly limited, I don't think it's going to have an unintended consequence because of its narrowness. We need to act on it right away, simply because the break is long and it's not going to allow us time to be able to underwrite this effectively. So I ask your indulgence that, if this were a big thing, I could see it, but this, I think relatively small adjustment to the state constitution that can really get at the issue of affordable housing, I think could be beneficial for us.
Betty?
I'm not willing to vote for, to support amending the constitution without a lot more thought about it, and I have, I still have a problem with, I want to think about this, I want to hear what other people think about it, about allowing private people to benefit from bond measures, but mainly, I'm very reluctant to support amending the constitution. Thank you.
Any other comments from council? So I will just say, this came to us Friday afternoon, I contacted all of you on Sunday to give you, try to give you a couple of days to think about it, recognizing that it was a short timeline, but the timeline is what it is because of the ballot, the voter's pamphlet pressures. So I am hoping that you will support it, but I'll put it, yes, Greg?
You know, I think we need to recognize the fact that there was near unanimous support in the legislature for this, that it was bipartisan. Sometimes stuff comes up on the plate that is exactly opportune, but we don't have enough time to quote-unquote digest all of the parts of it. But if we're going to move forward with affordable housing in this state, you know, I think that this is one of the ways that we can do that, and I'm highly supportive of us making this resolution. It's not something that we're putting into law, but we're stating that we are in alignment with our leaders in the legislature, and I think that this is not a overly huge onerous deal that is going to come back to bite us.
And could benefit us greatly.
Could benefit us greatly, yes.
All right, ready for a vote? All in favor of this resolution? One, two, three, four, five, six. Alan?
Yes.
Seven. Opposed, one. Thank you all very much, I really appreciate your support for this, I think that's great. Okay, now we're ready for our work session on Town Square Planning.
Thanks, Mayor, and Will, I'll turn it over to you to take us through the presentations.
Thank you. I'm Will Doughty in Planning and Development. I think the last time that I gave a presentation, the slides weren't working and I had to show you my slides like this, so I'm glad that we have a screen today, and I also am planning to not talk at all about dancing chickens. However, I do want to give you a triple update, Park Blocks, Farmers Market, and City Hall. Okay, a little background first, and then I'll put the pieces together, then talk about the work that's underway, and close with an explanation of our next steps. So let's begin by getting in our Wayback Machine to revisit the events of 2016 and 2017. There we go. You might recognize some faces in this photo. You had just voted to partner with Lane County on a new vision for our downtown. If you recall, there were a lot of smiles that day. Throughout the preceding year, you had talked about the historic legacy of the Park Blocks and the role they've played in our history. When the opportunity came with Lane County to exchange properties for the City Hall and County Courthouse, there was, of course, a utilitarian consideration regarding the acreage and location of each site, but what had really captured many imaginations was the idea of the civic heart, a space around which both city and county would gather, and within which we would create space for our people, a place for a new county courthouse, and the celebration of our heritage and economy with our two famous markets. This project taps into who we are as a community, it connects where we came from with where we want to go. This combination of past with future, legacy with aspiration, gives this work enduring You've probably noticed that we called this work session "An Update on the Town Square Project," that's project in the singular. After listening to the outcomes described by council and paying attention to conversations in the community, we've realized that the three parts of the town square are too closely interrelated to consider them as separate projects. For sure, there will be certain differences, but when you try to talk to someone about City Hall without the Farmers Market, or the market without the Park Blocks, you begin to understand how closely these are linked. And it's not just semantics. As much as great buildings throughout history have represented their cultures, as often as not, these buildings have a great public space in front of them, and this is where the meaningful life of the culture took place. From celebration to protest, the values of the community are represented and expressed in the public space, the town square. I think this resonates with people, because you'll notice that they seem to light up when you talk about envisioning the town square. Their imaginations are captured by the public space in the Park Blocks that goes beyond the City Hall building. And as you've probably realized, this is so important. Building a new City Hall is not easy, I think we all know that. But it's extra difficult when we complicate it with the added burdens of needing to capture the imagination of the community and shoulder the symbolism of our identity. As I've just mentioned, it seems that the public space really excites people more than the building, which shouldn't be a big surprise. Although we may spend a considerable amount of time here, and although we encourage everyone to come and participate in the public process, we just don't have the drawing power of the Park Blocks, and especially that of the Saturday Market and Farmers Market. Something similar happens with identity. A diverse multicultural community like Eugene has many things to celebrate and hold dear, but often these point to competing or conflicting values, which makes it especially hard to capture these concepts in wood, masonry, glass, or steel. All the more so when we expect the building to stay relevant for generations. Public space, on the other hand, is ideally suited for this purpose. No less rich in symbolism, it is flexible and adaptable. Without altering its design, it still changes from day to day and over the course of decades to respond to the needs of the people. And while a building is necessarily a solid with activity occurring in the interior, the space is a void to be filled by the activity of the community. So imagine, if you will, bringing a visitor to Eugene, someone who doesn't really know us yet but wants to better understand who we are. With the town square, we have the opportunity to showcase different facets and nuances of who we are, a destination where the community can gather for arts and culture, play, commerce, and civil discourse. So now I want to shift away from the why and get into the how. It won't come as a surprise to you that the first question on most people's mind when you talk about City Hall is, how will it be different this time? Perhaps that's what's on your minds, too. This may not be exactly what you were expecting, but a big part of the answer is what I've just covered. People are hungry for public space that feels welcoming and active, and people care a lot about what happens in the Park Blocks. To set this project on the path for success, we start by making it about something that resonates with them more deeply than a single building. By shifting this from a project about the City Hall building to the entire town square, we capture more imagination, create more enthusiasm, represent our community more fully, connect to more people, and begin with more smiles. With that as our starting place and a guiding perspective throughout the project, let's talk about how we're going to make it happen. So I'm sure you've heard that it's very expensive to build right now, and the future projections are actually all over the place, up and down, all over. So I'd like to be able to sit here and tell you that everything's going to go fine, I promise, but of course, I can't do that, no one can. Instead, our plan is to lean on two key principles to reach the best outcomes, no matter what happens in our local economy or our national economy. Starts with budget. We begin the City Hall part of the project with a clear budget, and then we design to that budget. This community has developed a strong list of values for the City Hall, and we need to integrate that into the budget conversation. We will scrutinize the building program based on it, establish a per-square-foot budget, and evaluate all the building elements and features against this starting point. If at some point we find that the budget we've developed is no longer workable, we will work together to carefully and deliberately amend it. So that brings us to our second point, which is communication. There are a number of pieces in a project like this and a lot of vested interests. Not only is this a consequential project for city residents of all neighborhoods, it has the eyes of the region on it, because this is no less a public space for them. We have two iconic markets, we have city and county governments. Downtown stakeholders depend on this space as their neighborhood park. As we go forward, communication through regular updates will be crucial. It's what will keep this project running smoothly, and it will help keep you and the broader community aware of new challenges and opportunities as they come up. So what's next? Looking ahead, the pivotal event is the announcement of a clear title from Lane County for the Butterfly Lot. Some of the work that needs to be done on this project needs to wait until that happens, other things are in progress now. So on this timeline, that's us sitting here on July 25th, and there's the title decision from the county with December 1st. Because public engagement is very important, I want to put that up there first, even if it's going to be a little bit out of sequence. We don't want to begin the public engagement in any meaningful way until we are assured that the time and investment of community members isn't misdirected. The timing of the final answer from Lane County sets us up nicely to begin outreach and stakeholder engagement at the beginning of 2019, after the holidays and other vacations. Up to that point, we have a few things to finish. The first is staffing. You're familiar with the downtown ops team, and just like that, there's a role for every department in this project. Parks, public safety, public art, city manager's office, those all come to mind right off the bat, so that's, and that's four departments. So we're finalizing a staffing model that reflects that diversity and cooperation. There's also public engagement, a public engagement plan that's in the works, and a communication plan that needs to be deliberate and implemented from the get-go. We're working with the EPA right now on the Butterfly Lot as part of our brownfields program, and we will be conducting environmental testing in a couple of weeks. Budget. We plan to be back here in the fall to talk with you, to work with you, to develop the project's preliminary budget. And lastly, we're writing RFPs to help us find the right consultants. First, we'll need a company to manage the public engagement process and prepare the initial design concepts. Hopefully, you're all familiar with the downtown riverfront park process. The work being done on that right now by the Walker Macy team is proving to be an excellent precedent for how this kind of work can go forward. After the public engagement and concept design, it's time for the full design process. It's likely that we'll split this up into two packages, perhaps two contracts, to move it forward in the most efficient and effective manner. That's about a year, the City Hall's more complex, will probably take longer than the other pieces. And from there, we move into construction. I don't want to gloss over the outreach and community engagement. For a good outcome, we know from experiences such as the Park and Rec Systems Plan how important it is to get it right. On the one hand, there has been a tremendous amount of work done to date. Envision Eugene, the Climate and Energy Action Plan, the Project for Public Spaces work, the previous design for City Hall, there's been planning work done by the two markets, there is 2006 Parks Block Master Plan. So you've got all of those, and at the same time, we are considering something new, which is the integration of the Farmers Market and City Hall into or around the Park Blocks. And we also need to explore whether the political, cultural, or economic context has changed in that time. So I like to think of it like, and this is what you've all been waiting for, a chocolate peanut butter cup. Although I suppose a peanut butter and jelly sandwich might work, too. If you already know what someone thinks about chocolate, and you know their opinion about peanut butter, you have a pretty good idea of what they're going to think about a chocolate peanut butter cup. However, the combination does make something new. The different elements interacting with each other does create a new experience that's more than the simple side-by-side addition of the parts. So what does it mean to have a City Hall on the Park Blocks? How does the park connect from the south side of 8th Avenue to a new area on the north side? How do you manage a year-round Farmers Market right in front of City Hall? This is an opportunity to reassess the way we apply our values, as well as the chance to answer perennial questions like, where do the bathrooms go? There's a lot of questions to be answered, and we're very excited to be sharing these ideas with you and bringing the Town Square project forward. There's also a lot of passion in the city for this space, for the markets, the various other events, and for what it means to us as an eclectic and sometimes eccentric community. We have a lot of history to share, a lot of culture to celebrate, and a lot of aspirations. The Town Square is an opportunity for us to think about more than just the City Hall, but to build a stage on which to play out the life of the community. So that's the update that we have, we're not asking for any action from you at this point, but interested in your conversation and any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I have to just say, starting off, it is really very refreshing to think about this all as one piece, and to think about City Hall related to the Farmers Market and the larger Town Square idea, so thank you very much for reframing this for us. Questions from, comments from council? Emily? Take it away, Emily.
First of all, I'm thrilled to hear that we're going to have bathrooms in the park, that's really awesome, so thank you. You better show up with them. Why are we spending money on the Butterfly Lot and the potential City Hall Lot if we don't know that we're going to own it? I mean, I realize we want to keep a project going quickly, and so on that frame, it makes sense to start now, but from a financial viewpoint, I'm not interested in investing money in a project that might not happen. And I think with the public being upset about City Hall, they don't want to invest money in a project that might not happen. So when I read this, I was like, why are we doing the EPA and the brownfield and these other things now? And then I'm wondering about funding, since I think I remember the downtown urban renewal money for the Farmers Market, parks, and the other places were specifically not to go to City Hall. So if we're now combining these projects, what's happening with that money, and how do we keep the urban renewal money out of the City Hall project? Thanks.
Comment?
You know, I can talk a little bit about your second question there. You might remember the Urban Renewal District, the last time you changed that to include monies for Farmers Market and the Parks Blocks, you also carved, or you put into that just the Civic Plaza part of City Hall as an eligible expense. I don't know how that specifically would overlap with this, or if it does, and it may depend upon what a final design actually looks like, but the urban renewal dollars are not currently authorized to be spent on the City Hall building itself, so...
Seems to me like a plaza's part of the building, so anyway...
Yeah, and I think that will be a part of the conversation that eventually comes to this body when you start authorizing... this body when you start authorizing dollars for certain kinds of things. So that will be a piece that the council will have to sort of work through on that.
And I can very briefly speak to your first question, which was when the, and I don't have the purchase and sale agreement in front of me, but the last amendment that was made to the purchase and sale agreement did have a provision that allowed the city to move forward with some planning efforts without a financial risk if the quiet title action is unsuccessful. So there was a provision in the amendment that was made to accommodate moving forward with a quiet title action, that if some of these expenses are ultimately of no use, that we could get refunded up to a maximum amount from the county for those.
Thanks, I remember that now.
Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. Well done, sir. Nice presentation. You may have done it too well. To Emily's point, when you combine a couple of things, they're now a different thing. I mean, chocolate and peanut butter, or chocolate and peanut butter, but when you put them together, it's Reese's. That's a different thing altogether. And the important piece isn't the legal piece for me so much as it's, that's what we promised when we had the public conversation in advance of the agreements around use of the downtown urban renewal money. And so if the square is the City Hall, and the City Hall and the square, the space, I'm having difficulty understanding how we're not doing exactly what we said we weren't going to do.
I don't think the square and the space, or, excuse me, City Hall and the square are exactly the same piece. So for example, the Urban Renewal District, as you last amended that, said dollars available for the parks blocks, and we traditionally think of those as the two blocks, and the farmer's market, which was thought of as being at least a part of the Butterfly Lot. It could be some other place, but that's what's always been thought about. And then there was the Civic Plaza in front of the City Hall was a part of that. And so right now, it feels like the Urban Renewal District dollars could go towards the parks blocks portion of the town square, towards the farmer's market piece of the town square. And then I do think, as Emily's question is, is where's the delineation between sort of the City Hall building and what could be viewed as a Civic Plaza? We just don't know that question yet, or the answer to that, because there hasn't been the design of that particular piece, and so...
If you could, my point was, this presentation has four slides that say they're the same.
I think what we're trying to articulate is that when we think about town square, there's a synergy around the town square of all of those different pieces that, when they act together and react together and interact together, what you do is you get a different sense than if you embark on designing and building them as independent pieces to the whole, and so...
Give me, I apologize for interrupting you again. It's, you know, not a news flash to anybody that this isn't my first choice for a location for City Hall. So in the process, we're finding a new way to sell this location, is how it seems to me. And I think that's unfortunate, that, I mean, I understand the value of the work that we're doing around the park blocks and the farmer's market, and I agree that we should do them, especially with, under the circumstances with downtown urban renewal money. But to combine it with the City Hall in this way is, feels unfortunate to me, because it feels as though, it's a reason to, it feels like this is a sales job to a degree, as opposed to a report on a public project. So I'm feeling oddly about it.
And the intent is to provide the council back with what we think is a good approach based on what is current council policy and decisions. And so if that were to change, then this design would change as well. So we're just responding to current policy.
Let me be real clear, too. You're not doing this. This is the council majority who decided on this option. The city manager did not. You're doing exactly as you were asked to do, and thank you. My comments are directed towards the rest of the current council direction. Thank you.
Claire?
Thanks. Will, could you put the timeline slide back up for us? So I had a different reaction from the other two councillors. I'm really actually very glad to see us framing these separate pieces into an effort that envisions a town square. City Hall could not be, you know, a part of that discussion if the City Hall decision was different, but right now, it's butted up right against the farmer's market location. And so I think to pretend that these spaces aren't going to interact with each other would be a very narrow view that wouldn't serve the community as we think about how to develop them. And I didn't hear you mention a Civic Plaza in the presentation, so I heard you talk about the parks blocks, the farmer's market, and City Hall. And then I see on the timeline that two of those projects, which are funded through urban renewal, are separate from the City Hall, which is not going to be funded through urban renewal. So I didn't get this conflation of funding or processes in the same way that other councillors may have. So I see this as taking these different projects that we've identified, and I'm really glad to see us talking about the parks block project, because I kind of wondered where that was in the landscape of all of this work, and acknowledging that they are going to affect one another, and that we should really be thinking, how does this happen in a way that's more holistic than not? And obviously, in terms of budgeting and allocation of public dollars, you know, we need to be very scrupulous about making sure how we go about that, and when it's time to do that, we will go through that process. So I appreciate this framing. I'm glad to see the continuation of the downtown operations team and identifying leadership to think about how these public spaces are going to interact with each other and the various departments that are charged with making sure that they are going to work for the public. So I really appreciate this, and I think it's a good update.
Thank you. Chris, and then Betty.
Mayor, can I get in the queue, please?
And then Alan, yes.
Thank you. I thought this is a very helpful presentation, and trying to figure out what the time is going to look like going forward, I think is always a challenge. But to kind of repeat myself for the five-millionth time, you can have it right, you can have it cheap, or you can have it fast, pick any two. And I think earlier, we decided we could maybe try to get something fast and right, and the price got very high. And we realized, oh, you know, without committing the money, we need to step back, and I think that's what we did. And while it's been a difficult thing for me to do, I have resigned myself to the notion that I want to have it right, and I want to have it economical, so I'm going to have to take the time, because that's the third element I'm going to have to give on. So I know that this is not going to be built in my lifetime on the council, whereas I thought maybe that could have happened at one time. Now I realize, no, I'll be off the council when this happens. But I can live with that, because I'd rather have it right, and I'd rather have it be economically effective. So in that case, how do we then approach those two that we do want to have? And your slide that had budget in there in big, bright letters to me is that area where we need to start talking now, because we don't have to wait for a decision on the Butterfly Lot, and we don't have to wait for anything else to start talking about where will the money come from to build a City Hall anywhere we decide to build it. And I think we have pieces of that that we've talked about before, but those pieces come and go depending on the times, the surrounding elements, other things that are going on in the community. So I think it's time to revisit that conversation in context of where we are now, what we have available now, and what we could do now. So I think that is something we could do, and that would be time well spent, because I am very challenged sitting on my hands, which I feel like I've been doing for two years. And I'm going to have to sit on my hands again until December 1st. So what can I do while I'm sitting on my hands? And I think a budget conversation is a very valuable one to have, so that when we finally do get to a decision point, we at least have a sense of what kind of money we have available. You mentioned, we need to know what the budget is. Well, we need to know what the budget is, and we need to know what goes into it, and whether it includes a courtyard, or whether it does include a courtyard, whether it includes a plaza or not, whether it includes a building or not. Those are all things which we've talked about before, but the Urban Renewal Agency can meet and talk about those things. The city council can meet and talk about those things, and we want to do that in the context of where we are today, in 2018, 2019, 2020, and 2021. As I've said before, this is a 100-year decision, and if it takes a little more time upfront in order to get it right, I'm willing to invest the time to do it, but I think we need to have productive outcomes during that time, and I think budget will be right up there at the top of the list.
Betty?
It's really only been two years. Seems like forever. It's no secret that I strongly object to urban renewal as a diversion of tax money and too easy to spend, but as long as it's, I don't see any better use for it than City Hall myself. I know council majority's decided we can't do that, but what's more urban renewing than having a nice City Hall?
Increased tax.
I just wanted to say that, as long as we have it. I remember when people thought it shouldn't be used for the library, and I think I was the first person to say, well, it's there, why don't we use it for the library? And finally, we did. Glenn Klein can tell you how he said, how we could if we wanted to. That's a long time ago, but I have no objection to using it for that, as long as, but I wish it would, I wish it would end someday. Thank you.
Alan?
Thank you, Mayor. It wasn't my first choice to have the City Hall be located on the Butterfly Lot. My first choice was actually the old City Hall Lot site, which was actually a much cheaper option, but I'm warming up to the Butterfly Lot. One of the things about good planning is that when you plan for something, you look at the things that interact with it and think about them more holistically. So all of these things interact together, the park blocks, the farmer's market, Saturday Market, new City Hall, the Butterfly Lot, all those things act together, they should be planned together, and that all becomes the town center project. I think this is a great idea. It's exactly what we've been talking about in terms of good planning, taking everything into consideration when you do project planning, and making sure that we look at it in a holistic fashion. I think we'll probably find that we get some synergies out of that, that could lower costs, and hopefully. And then finally, moving forward, if you recall, delaying City Hall and moving the park blocks is costing us about a half a million dollars a year in just costs associated with inflation and construction cost increases. So the less we can spend on waiting around doing nothing by planning ahead of time and making sure that we don't spend even more later by having to start from scratch when all of this gets done, I think is a smart idea. In the long run, it'll save the city money, and it's a smart thing to do.
Thank you. Jennifer?
Thanks, Mayor. So thank you, Will. This is an excellent presentation. I really appreciate how you stepped outside of the City Hall and looked at the surrounding area and really connected those dots. I would love to take you to every one of my neighborhood meetings and have you do this for people so that they can, whether they agree or disagree, they can see the whole picture of what we're talking about here. The, what I think what Chris was talking about, the budget, I have not been here long, so a lot of this discussion, I've been on the other side. And so I think as a community member, if you were going to come to me and ask for my advice or what I thought, being able to connect my values with a price tag, you know, so if I value having energy efficiency, what does that, what does that choice mean dollar-wise? It's hard, you can say, you know, I want this and this and this and that, that's really easy, but when you start putting those dollar signs, you start making those hard decisions. And so I think as a community member, to make an informed decision, I would want to see that, so I could kind of rank, you know, okay, if I had to choose, this is the first thing I'd cut. So that's just some feedback on that, and I think otherwise, I'm very impressed with this.
Great. Thank you. I have Emily and Mike asking for a second round, so Emily?
Thank you. I want to make it really clear that I like this project. I really do think they should all be designed together. I agree with the things that Claire said. I'm very reassured, having remembered, because I was reminded, that we're not really risking any money by doing the design. I think that really helps a lot. My question was more, how are we going to deal with the money, because I remember not on City Hall, and is the plaza separate? And certainly, I think the plaza and City Hall should go together, but I, the plaza and the farmer's market, in my mind, really are the same space and should be designed together. We agreed that we'd wait for the land swap until December 1st, so I think any other ideas should wait until then. I personally think that the Butterfly Lot, after considering all the other options and really wiggling around with it, is the good place. I really would like to have us have a town square. When I was running, I said that the town square should be in front of City Hall, and so I think, I think this is really a cool project. I was concerned about the money. And I agree with Chris that of all the things we could look at that would carry over to wherever the City Hall is, is the budget. So that's a great idea. I would like to see us start with the park blocks. I mean, sure, we need overall design, but I think we could get going on the park blocks right away, because we know that we're going to keep them, and we know they're going to update them. My biggest concern is if the construction's going to take 12 to 18 months, what are the plans for Saturday Market and farmer's market? Because we cannot lose a season of those. We have people who depend on that, both for income and for pleasure. It's one of our really big draws, so I'm wondering what the plans are, or are we making plans? Because I cannot support having any time without farmer's market. But again, I'm excited to have a town square. I really want it, but of course, we have to be careful. So we need to think about designing, and as a part of City Hall, and the money, and what can we do now without taking risks? So thank you for the update. Let's get going.
I can just speak to the markets. I know that there also has been concern within the markets. I guess a couple of things are relevant. First of all, we know the importance of the markets in these planning processes, and so part of the idea of communication and making that a critical part of the process going forward is to make sure that they are involved, both in the know, but also involved in the planning process, so that nothing, wherever this leads, nothing comes as a surprise, everything is worked, so that they know what's coming. The other big piece is that we, we don't know, when we were talking about the park blocks as a public project with the Urban Renewal Amendment, we laid out a kind of a range of options in terms of the scale of the work that would be done, and so it's really not until we get to the public engagement process that's a part of this project, that we, I think we will see what level of work should be done. And that could be anything from, I know, a very kind of minor cosmetic work to substantial work. And so without getting through that process, and again, the process that the markets are also involved in helping us get through, it's really unclear what kind of impact this project could have. So from the beginning, we have, we have tried to be as clear as possible that we want to, we want to make this have the minimal impact on the markets as possible, and they're clearly important institutions in the community and an important part of what has made downtown successful. So the challenge is going to be to try to figure it out, and so we will, we'll work with them, and we'll all work together. I know it's going to be a value that we hear from council.
I think it's really critical, and I'm hoping that if the construction takes more than November to end of March, which I imagine it will, we could find a site downtown where the markets could be, a big parking lot, something that we could use.
Thank you. Mike?
Oh, yeah, but they're going to be building something on it.
Thank you.
We should build first and use them.
We talked about this.
No, the City Hall lot, Mike, not your lot.
Anyway, my concern is in process from here. I appreciated the what's next part more than most because how we proceed from here, I think, is critically important so that we don't get high-centered again on, on ability to move forward. And I heard the same thing here until those last few comments, but I heard several of us say, well, this isn't my first choice, but, you know, whether it's in one form or another. I suggest we spend a work session working on that in some way. The vision of why, and I get that this is some of that. But after we've had some finality with the decision, after we've had some, I think that's an under, an under-explored territory. And number two, where it says budget here on the bottom of the houses different page, is that just for the park blocks or is that budget thing with the City Hall?
It's, it's for all of it, but City Hall especially because that's, that's the one where it's been brought up as a, needs to be different.
And I appreciate that because I think that's the important piece, but it bears review of what happened before. This is how we started it before. We had $15 million and facilities were reserved before. And we said, well, we can spend maybe a few more and we'll, we'll figure it all out. We'll get maybe $18 million we could spend. And we started the conversation based on what we could spend. They came back to us with, here's what, what you can spend delivers. And it was this council who said, okay, but that's not enough for us because it needs to have these values reflected in the City Hall. And the council's been clear, the mayor and councillor Zelenka were incredibly clear on two separate occasions that we are not compromising our values in building our City Hall, but the values are where the money is. And last time, when it came back without those values, our questions as council was, okay, well, what would it cost if? What would it cost if we added this? And what would it cost if we added that? And that's where the big number came back. It'll cost $30 million. So I really hope we're gonna, we're gonna focus in on that and make a good decision in that process about budget. If that's the process that it's going to be about budget and not values, we're gonna, I mean, we're gonna have to make some compromises to get this done. So it's still not clear to me whether we're going to compromise on budget or whether we're going to compromise on values.
Ultimately, I think that's a council decision. I think what we will do is, we're trying to approach this different than last time for many of the reasons that you just stated. And we do have the, one value of the last go-around is we actually have a lot more information now than we did starting the last time. And so what we would hope, and Will alluded to it, is thinking more about per-square-foot cost as opposed to overall cost and what is it that's going to, what can we afford for whatever cost that happens to be? And if it means we don't have carpet, then we don't have carpet. And then that, we lose that value of carpet. So it just depends on what it is. And so that's what we're, ultimately for us, we think the difference will be a different kind of budget conversation upfront. So when we move forward, it'll be a different expectation. But whether or not you trade off budget for values is going to be your, so your deliberations, we'll just provide the information to be able to have that.
That's awesome. I've been trying for nine years to get this to a cost-per-square-foot conversation, and I'm glad we're doing that. Thank you.
I want to, I just wanted to make two, two comments about that. And one is that there were values that council, prior to several new councillors and me being on board here, did weigh in as being important. One had to do with the seismic soundness, had to do with, you know, what kind of space it had to encompass, had to do with reusing materials, had to do with energy efficiency. So I do think, I think that that, looking back over those things, how important are those, whether we call those values or whether we call those simply, what sort of assets do we expect this building to contain are going to be an important part of that conversation? So, and I think, as Jennifer has said, attaching a dollar amount to what those actually cost upfront is a good point. So there is that opportunity to go back, even before we know where we're building a City Hall, even before we know where the land swap is, those are things you can still wrap your heads around. And so that seems to me a good part of that conversation. The other thing is, I will just say that, you know, I, for one, am not very excited about the opportunity of going back to square one and looking at all of the options again for a City Hall. And I will put it out to, to Mike that you always have the option of floating a work session poll to see if your fellow councillors really want to go back to square one. And so I invite you to do that if you want to do that poll. And then if you get us support, then that's a conversation we can have. So that's what's open to you. Any other comments? Okay. Thank you very much. Very, very exciting and interesting report, helpful. And I think we're on to downtown public safety. Chief, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and council. And just for the record, I think Will lost me after you said chocolate peanut butter cup. You know, being a fat kid all my life, that those things I perk up. I'm not saying.
That's the new pie now.
That's the new pie, yeah. I love it. One of my favorites.
There isn't peanut butter cups at our desks or sites are there that I'm not seeing getting?
Eddie's eating yours.
Actually, Mike's going to eat yours.
I'm eating yours, Alan.
It's, it's clear to me that my command presence does not, does not work well in council. Things are off the rails already. So I do not have a PowerPoint for you, but I do have a conversation that I'd like to have with you and some updates. We've talked a lot about downtown, and I think you've, you've been exposed to an awful lot of the efforts that, that are going on down there. And so there are some new things that maybe you haven't had exposure to that I thought would be worth the conversation. And before I do that, I think it would be important for me, as a leader, new leader in this organization, to just recognize how hard the Eugene Police Department and its partners have been working to try and meet the needs downtown. I continue to be impressed with the levels of creativity, effort, and willingness to kind of meet the needs that we see in the downtown core. And that has manifested itself in many different ways, many different people stepping out of their comfort zones and repurposing certain staff downtown that have never been down there before. A great example of that is the comments that I get commonly where they are really excited to see our traffic team downtown. And it doesn't even mean our traffic team enforcing traffic laws. It means having a motorcycle downtown with a, with a motor cop off of his motorcycle and talking to people. And just, just the overwhelming support for, for that. And so I wanted to publicly thank this organization for taking on this endeavor and, and just being very responsive to what I believe the continued needs are. And so with that, there's a couple of new things that have happened in the not-so-distant past that I think are important to point out. We had a survey recently done of nearly 5,000 parking customers who, who said that they indicated that they felt safe in garages, but not so safe traveling to and from their, their destinations. And so we took that to heart. And with some of the one-time money that council and the Budget Committee graciously gave us, we have and are getting started to deploy a whole separate layer of ASI security that is going to give us some better coverage in the downtown core to include coverage on weekends until 2:00 in the morning. And so that is a tremendous partnership and I think a tremendous opportunity to leverage some of the one-time dollars with a public-private partnership that kind of falls under the security umbrella to help us achieve our, our safety goals downtown. And so we are, we are scheduled to have that happen. It's, we, we've had some training. Sergeant Julie Smith, I saw her last night when I was downtown after meeting with the Neighborhood Leaders Council. And she was doing some training with them. And at one point, Sergeant Smith had in tow six ASI officers, like eight park ambassadors or downtown ambassadors that looked like the Pied Piper of security forces. And Julie's walking around and, and doing some training. And what's really neat about it is I think you have some leadership in the right places that are helping people to understand what is, what are we trying to accomplish downtown? What's the message going to be? And really creating a better and more consistent approach to how we deal with people in the downtown core. So I'm really, really excited about, about that. The city expectations that we've set out for them is to be present, be visible, be available, be proactive, and be welcoming to all law-abiding patrons in the downtown. And when it comes to enforcement, that they try and gain voluntary compliance and if, in the event that they need help, that they call us and we go and we help them. And so I'm really pleased with the efforts around that particular contract that we've entered into with ASI. Another, some other things that are going on downtown that you may or may not have seen is the, the arrival of several planner boxes that are occupying important space for us and beautifying downtown. That is directly in alignment with the strategies around crime prevention through environmental design and trying to, to figure out what are, how to better program those spaces that are, that are difficult to program. You'll see those downtown. I talked about kind of the all-hands-on-deck approach that we've, that we've taken to the downtown core. And we, we, again, really, really appreciate all the efforts of, of all the officers and professional staff that are down there. Better communication with our stakeholders and partnerships with our stakeholders. We issued radios to everybody. We're involved in training. We've provided the de-escalation or verbal judo training for the ambassadors. And so EPD's taken a leadership role in being able to do that. And one of the things you heard from me early in my time here talking about downtown is to try and break down those silos where everybody's kind of doing their own thing downtown and really bringing it under one umbrella so that we can have a consistent approach to, to what we're doing. And I'm really pleased that that seems to be coming to fruition and we're seeing some benefits from that. We're working, continue to work on, and with council's leadership, continue to work on those parts of the downtown core that could be better governed through good practices and ordinances. And the City Attorney's Office has been very gracious in entertaining an awful lot of crazy ideas, quite frankly. And, and I appreciate the help that we're getting from them on, on what, what it looks like to, to have healthy ordinances downtown that makes sense, but maybe more importantly, helping to define, okay, how do we enforce those? What are, you know, the do's and the don'ts and the pitfalls and how do we consistently enforce those? And like with any police officer, we always try and get a little creative on, on how we're, how we're trying to do our job. And sometimes being able to have that clear and concise communication with our City Attorney's Office and City Prosecutors is really important. So I appreciate that. Public safety camera system is, is moving on. We were, had the policy go in front of the Police Commission, I believe it was on July 11th or some there, somewhere there around that time. Had great dialogue about that. The good news is they had done a lot of work on this several years ago when it was kind of shelved and we, we, we brought it back and had some great dialogue about that, simplified some things. We have just received the, the final, or closed the RFP process on that. We're working closely with Eugene ISD on storage solutions for that tremendous amount of data that we would store through this. And so we were hopeful that we will have a vendor identified by the end of the week and we'll continue to keep moving, moving on that. And, and I can't give you a, a delivery time until we identify a vendor. But rest assured, this is, this is a big push for me. You've heard this from me a lot, I think. And I've heard it a lot in the community about, when do we get, when, when do we see them? When do we see them? And, and I keep letting them know that there are some things about the project that we don't want to get in front of or get ahead of and then, and then on the back end really be struggling. And most of that is IT-related. And so we're, we're working on that. So I'm hopeful by the end of the summer, end of the fall, we'll see, we'll see some of those. In closing, I thought I would just share with you, a lot of us are downtown and we're having lots of dialogue with people downtown and lots of meetings. During some of the recent meetings, and I got some of this information from, from the downtown team, one of the, one of the quotes that was recently, that I have here, one of the communications recently received is that this has been the best pre and post-country fair for downtown I've witnessed in 20 years. And that came from the DEI Security Manager. And two thumbs up from some local business owners. Thomas, our good buddy at the Barn Light, said, this has been the best summer season for profit and customer attendance for my business since we opened. And so those are the types of feedback we're getting. Certainly, there's more work to be done. Every once in a while, we swing and miss on things like we all do, as we ask imperfect human beings to do a perfect job. We'll continue to keep working hard, but I feels like that we're, we're moving in the right direction. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention to this, to the council and publicly say that this, what we're doing and what we've done this summer is not sustainable. It is a, it is a fix for the summer, but I appreciate the leadership that city has had and the council continues to have on, on having dialogue about what is a sustainable solution for safety and security needs throughout the entire community, not just the downtown. And I'll look forward to, to having that dialogue with you when you return from break in September. And with that, any questions, please?
Thank you very much. It's very heartening to hear that some downtown businesses are feeling the positive effects of your work. So thank you for sharing that. Are there comments? Betty, take it away.
Thank you. A question, you said cameras. Are you talking about the trailers you mentioned?
I'm talking about the trailers.
You've decided for sure to have those then?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay. I've had people tell me they don't think it's a good idea, but, and I just wanted to compliment the police officers I've seen lately, and one of them was carrying dog treats, which was very nice.
Many of them do, yes.
And thank you. That's all I have right now.
Any other comments, questions? Emily?
Thank you. I'd like to know the hourly pay for the AIS. I'd like to know the hourly pay for the ambassadors and what's the total projected cost of those? The flower boxes, those metal farm troughs aren't really very attractive. People are sitting on them like benches this morning at 5:30 when I made my downtown tour of sleepers. There was somebody sleeping between them. Everybody's moving down to the skunks and that's closer to the residential area. I see at least 10 people down there most of the time. There's a lot of trash. The skunks are on where the, what is it? Lincoln? Lincoln and Broadway, the skunk statue. Well, you don't come downtown, so you wouldn't know. Anyway, it's just getting pushed to the west. I don't know what's happening in the other directions, but it's a bigger problem than just downtown. It's going to move and the problem's not going to go away. So I'm glad things seem better to some people downtown, but I'm really concerned about the spread. Did you get the big video cameras or the little ones that you showed us? And how much are they costing? I didn't think it was the best year in 20 years. I'm glad people are making money, but I didn't think so. If it's not sustainable, it's almost not worthwhile. Because last year, when the effort stopped, it exploded with people again. It was really uncomfortable. So I know we have $100,000 for programming, but not for public safety. So I'm really concerned. I don't want to waste money and have fall and winter and spring go to hell again because they will. I'd really like to get some benches downtown. Been asking forever. I think it would lift people up off the ground, obviously. They could put their stuff underneath. They could pull their dogs next to it. Other people like me could sit down and eat a pizza pizza without going to sit with Ken, although I love Ken. I do really think benches would be a good thing. We have seats down at the park blocks and we have benches at Keesey Square. Yesterday, they were packing up the benches at 3:00. It's summertime. It's light till 9:00. I'd like to be able to go down there and sit, but you can't. So I think benches are cheap and quick, and I think they'd be the right thing to do. So I'm glad you're putting a lot of effort into it. I see an awful lot of security, but I really wish we'd gone with the Red Caps. I think they're cheaper and experienced. And I think having so many different uniforms downtown with the ambassadors, the Red Caps, AIS, the police, it's kind of overwhelming. Thanks.
So I certainly will be able to circle back around with you on, on many of those requests to get you the, the data that you, you need. I will, I would point out that we initially, with the $75,000 that was, was allocated for some additional security downtown, we engaged DEI and the Red Caps in that dialogue. And they articulated that the $75,000 was not going to be enough money for them to do anything measurable. And so we chose to go a little bit of a different direction, but that was our first stop in, in looking for a partnership for that money.
I'd like to know the difference in the costs.
Sure. Sure.
Jennifer?
Thank you. So thank you for the report. I spent a lot of time walking through downtown and I, for me, I'm glad to hear the businesses feel that it's getting better because I kind of felt that way and I wondered if it was shared with others. Especially I've noticed that the LTD station feels a lot more safe. When I go through there, I'm not dodging potential fights or people screaming at each other. It seems to really have gotten a lot better. Maybe not all the time, but the times that I'm there, it feels a lot better. But I'm wondering, so as we know, these problems move. Are you seeing them moving as a group or are they diluting out or do you know yet?
I don't think I know yet. I think councillor Simple obviously has some sense of that being, probably being in better contact with her ward. One of the security managers for ASI that has some of the adjacent contract has mentioned that they don't see it moving in their direction, but that doesn't necessarily mean it's not, hasn't been pushed down towards the skunk blocks. Skunk block, I don't...
The skunk corner.
The skunk corner.
Cross from Chomed.
So, but I am sensitive, but I am sensitive because I have been working and closely, both through email and face-to-face, for instance, with some of our business owners that have had some windows broken out that are kind of on the periphery of the downtown and wondering if that is a result of things being pushed out. One of the things that I've kind of embarked on is some listening sessions and dialogue with those that are unhoused about needs and about how we find some small wins for each other as they want to also provide for safety downtown as well. And so we've started, and this last week, we kind of embarked on the storage facility for people's belongings as trying to expand the time for that. I was made aware of some barriers to using that and we're trying, we're working closely with St. Vincent's. And I want to thank Jeff Perry for being really engaged in a lot of this dialogue on how do we get that expanded a little bit so people are more comfortable leaving their stuff, to include being able to store larger items, maybe that are trailers or shopping carts or however they're carrying their stuff. So there's ongoing dialogue that's happening over and over and over again. And so I think that we're well positioned to kind of start picking off some of these small wins about livability downtown in partnership with those that are unhoused. And so that line of communication is open. I met recently in Alden Baker Park to kind of get some sense of that and some feel around what maybe is beneficial for them. And so we'll continue to do that as well.
Great, thank you. Eddie?
Well, thank you. Emily mentioned benches. I think we need chairs too, things that people can move to form groups. And my experience, when I talk to the young people gathered near the bus station, I asked them if they would move to the side and they said, of course. And I thought, if they had a place to sit down and talk to each other, maybe they'd do that. And the people who object to the lounging on the sidewalk, again, if they had, if there were chairs and chairs that you could move to form a group would be good, I think. About moving the problems, that's what I always say, which is my objection to the smoking thing actually downtown. It just moves to another place. People have to be somewhere and they're going to be somewhere. I think it's better to have groups downtown than out in the residential areas. Someone suggested Washington Jefferson Park is a good gathering place and that sounds pretty good to me under the, but downtown is a place where people tend to congregate. And I have a question about, I don't know if it's on the topic or not, but the non-emergency number, the people camp at Amazon Park. I see them when I go there early in the morning. I don't go downtown at 5:30, but I go to Amazon Park at 6:30 and I see people picking up their camping stuff. I see people camping in the skate park and on the lawn too and scattering, leaving litter behind. When I call the non-emergency number, what I get is a long recording that says press this and press that and I just give up. And a lot of it's in Spanish, which I think it would be better if it started with English and then if you hear a voice that's speaking another language, then respond to it. Change, but, and I don't know whether that's your area or not.
It is my area, although I would admit that I don't, I'm not be able, would not be able to speak very intelligently to that particular part of the operation.
You can call the number.
Certainly can. What I can say is that for non-emergency dispatch numbers, it's not uncommon for dispatch centers to have some kind of an automated system which allows for workload to be better distributed to the, than 911 emergency calls for service. But we can take a look at that.
You could just call 911.
I would not encourage you to call 911 for illegal camping, but...
Thank you.
I'll give you my cell number.
Thank you.
Okay, Emily asking for a second round. Does anyone else need a first round? Okay, Emily, take it away.
Thank you. We had talked about an app for communication between all these different security forces. Is that in progress? Because it seemed really useful.
I have a meeting, soon as I leave here today, is my meeting to get demos on three of those solutions.
Fantastic, good job. I'm wondering if we could add the other side of Lincoln to the downtown core because that's where those windows are getting smashed and it's where Chevron is and it's a really big hotspot. So I think if we could add that other side, especially since we're increasing security and since that's close to the skunks, I think that would be really good. Non-emergency 911, just keep pushing one. You don't have to listen to all that stuff. Just push one, you'll get what you want. Took me a long time to figure that out. The storage, I think it's really great, except for the hours. People are telling me that their stuff is gone. I'm wondering if it's really thrown out or if they can retrieve it somehow because it's cruel. And if you work a job, you can't get there in time. If you're at court and you don't get out in time, then that's, I think it's really critical. We talked, John and I talked about maybe putting a porta potty next to it since it's monitored. Let's see. And shopping carts are stolen property. I do not think we should be storing them. Sorry, but we shouldn't. We should probably be arresting them. I have, wondering if, walking down the sidewalks, especially in front of Townsend's and Drake and Starlight, it's really hard to get by. And there's barely five feet unless you measure diagonally. Walking down many of our sidewalks, it's very hard to pass each other. And if you have two people walking side by side, there is no passing. And that's not even where the people are sitting. So I'm wondering if instead of five feet, if we could increase our necessary movement on sidewalks to eight feet and maybe paint a line on each side of the eight feet so people know where not to go.
We actually are looking at doing that at eight feet. I don't think we'd actually paint the line, but your point is well taken that there are places that it is difficult to maneuver for any numbers of circumstances. And we've had some people come to public forum and talk about that as well. So we are actually in the process of looking at eight feet as the standard for a sidewalk safety pathway.
Fantastic, I love that too. I've been asked, talking about maybe getting a dusted dawn over at E-Web because we own some of that land and we're not going to build right away. I think that would be very, very helpful. I've also put forth the idea of spaces for 10, 20 people. Could be a parking lot, could be an empty store. You could come in any time of day or night and lie down. Once you get up and start socializing, you're out of there. But it would give people a place to sleep or it could tell them to go in the daytime instead of on the sidewalk. We need to be downtown-ish, but it could be pretty discreet and small and we could call it Forty Winks Safe Sleep Zone.
What I would say is I've actually engaged some folks in that conversation, haven't found the perfect place, but have talked to them.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Thank you very much for bringing us this update. And I think that closes our final meeting and I just want to send you out. May the force be with you and we'll see you when the summer break is over.
But Lucy, those were the bad ones at the concert.
I know, it's all guys.